I'd like to bring the building and ground subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole to order, please. Attendance, a roll call.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
On the agenda, we have unfinished business that was tabled on June 22nd for the Holy Family lease.
Yes, Mary is making a copy. You had a copy last week of the draft of it, but I wanted you to have it again because Howard has been continuing to negotiate and work through language, so it's still not ready. However, my concern is, once the lease is ready, we want to be able to move on it. So I'm recommending, in consultation with Howard and, you know, legal counsel, that we authorize the mayor to approve the lease once negotiations is finalized and we're all in agreement with it, and have the mayor sign off on the lease so that we can get the lease going and get people into the space.
So do I have a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion that we allow the mayor to sign on the lease for a Holy Family.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes, and move it to the full committee.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Gaetley?
For adjourning.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Well, they already have that.
I think we just got a vote.
They just did that.
Okay.
Got it.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Yes.
What?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
You're too far. I can't whisper.
Okay. Call the personnel subcommittee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, yes. So this position, it actually is a position that exists, but it's called parent coordinator, thank you. Parent coordinator. It's an LSAA position. Annie Felice is the person in that position. She's doing much more work by necessity around our family community coordinators at the schools and helping with trainings, around working with parents, around making sure that translators are scheduled and doing what needs to get done for meetings. And so it was recommended by the special ed administration to upgrade the position because her scope of work has increased greatly. And so what you have in front of you is an upgraded job description of the work that she currently is doing. LSAA has agreed to just upgrade her. It would not be posted. She's already doing this work. We're just upgrading what her job description is.
And so we're just looking for approval.
Dr. Magnolia?
Yeah, I just had a question about the title of it, which seems very hodgepodge to me. It's like, here are three very different things that are, this person is doing, and we're going to put them all in a title.
So what I would say to that is, she, so she does two multiple things. But because of the parent family coordinator or family community coordinators, FCCs we call them now, those positions, we have a lot of them in our district now, and they work directly with families. And so her work with them is all linked to family and community work. So that's one piece of it. She also is working with recruitment of paraprofessionals within our community. And so the paraprofessional support is around providing trainings, providing support, recruiting new paras into the district. And so that's why it's the combination of the family and community and paraprofessional support.
Okay, so totally understand that. I wish her a very long and storied career in LPS, but she gets an offer to join a Mars mission, leaves us. How are we going to fill this? Like, somebody who could do those two very different things that you just explained. I understand that she has the capability of doing it. I'm just a little bit nervous that like some future person won't necessarily have the depth of expertise in these two very different fields, I guess. That's, I'm looking at a job posting not just as what one person does, but the sustainability of it.
Well, so when you look at the goals of the job, it, the three bullets there, it's hiring, placing and training, the Lynn Public Schools Special Education paraprofessionals, engaging with families and of students with disabilities around special education process, procedure and resources, and strengthening school, home and community connections through support and advocacy for students with disabilities.
Those I think are super clear. It's the qualifications part that I thought was highly specialized. Right, because if you went right in as a special ed teacher and never worked as a paraprofessional?
Okay.
Do you see, do you see what I mean by that?
Yeah.
And, and I think this is, I 100% support upgrading this person and all of that. I think it's just, I want to make sure the job description is not a unicorn job description, and we will never find another one like this. And we have to bring the job description back to the school committee because we realized it so is tailored to this specific person. So I'm happy to, you know, talk about it as is, make a couple changes. It just, it, when I read it, I was like, this is a job description written for the person who's doing the job, isn't it? And then I got worried about what happens if some fantastic opportunity takes her away from us, or this person, I didn't know exactly who it was quite yet, that we'd be able to find someone to fill those very specific shoes. That's all.
Do you have some recommendations?
Well, so where it says, previous experience as a paraprofessional and family engagement specialist required, I might say something like, previous experience in a special education classroom, working with students and/or families required. Because I can see all levels of experience in those classrooms as sort of setting someone up to be able to do this job. Do you want me to say that again, Deb?
Yes, please. Which Deb?
I think I got it.
All, all Debs.
Previous.
Previous experience in a special education classroom, working with students and/or families.
Got it.
Still required.
Yes, of course, required, yes.
Any other questions?
Any other? Mr. Castellanos?
I guess my question is around the, so this position's going to report to the administrator of special ed, and as we just hired a new special ed leader. Have, we kind of talked about the alignment that's going to look like with this position now? Like, is that going to be a pretty good transition for this position to work with our new special? Because our special, excuse me, our special ed director is going to be hitting a learning curve, and this position, as we're updating it, how is this going to be a support mechanism for that particular role?
So this person works very heavily with answering questions and clarifying procedure and, you know, the steps of doing a special education meeting and what they can expect in the process. Like, this is a big help, I feel, for any administrator in special education, because they're at the front lines of helping parents understand the process they're going to go through. It also is a great help in the recruitment of paras, paras of multi languages, train, you know, providing those paras with opportunities for training so that they're ready to do the job. So I personally see this person as a huge asset in this position, being a huge asset in the office.
Yeah, when I reviewed the post, I, I don't know why I felt like it was like an executive secretary, like, a position that, like, I don't, I don't know. The specialty on here, I just, I kind of, I'm kind of concerned a little bit about it, about the, the way it's going to function. And how much did we increase in the salary?
Oh, God. I don't know what she was. I don't have no, um.
I don't know what she makes.
I will tell you that it's interesting. We had a family engagement institute this week, and there was conversations about our family coordinators. And multiple leaders at that institute, she was the only one who got an enormous shout out in terms of her support of the schools. This woman's support is felt at the school level.
So I don't have a question about her. I have a question about the post. And this seems like, again, I think member, Dr. Magnolia mentioned the unicorn feeling. Like, I feel like this, I'm thinking about transportation, how when we lost the late Mr. Hegan, when we lost him, there was issues. And this position, I just feel like, I don't, I just don't want to run into a similar scenario.
Is there specific areas that you want to have adjusted?
Well, I don't want to start adding and dicing it up when you guys are ready. You've put a lot of time into it. I think there are some, I think Dr. Magnolia made some good points in the qualifications. I do feel that we should be mindful of the implementation of this role. And when we do, when we roll it out with special, the special ed director, that we have a clear focus and plan on how we're going to utilize this person's work. We are, as you just mentioned, Deputy Powers, that she's valuable, she's an asset, she's doing a lot of the work now. It's just that as the new, as there's new duties and responsibilities, there's also more pressure and more responsibilities and so forth. So just want to be cautious there. So.
If nobody else has a question, I just.
Member Capola, I have, I have a question. I just need clarification. Is it, was the recommendation to put it in lieu of or in addition to the special education?
In lieu of.
And so.
Under qual, under qualifications, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, so in lieu of previous experience as a paraprofessional and family engagement specialist required, I substituted the previous experience in a special education classroom working with students.
Classroom, okay.
Families, yeah, classroom.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. First of all.
Sorry. Did we get the numbers for the raise, for the base salary?
That she is now?
Sorry.
No, no, no.
This says 89.
Bottom is here.
89. What does she get now, though? Yeah, I'd have to go up.
Probably in the $60,000 range.
Yeah.
Right around $60,000.
It's, I do know it's one of the lowest paid positions in the union contract. I, I mean, I could have Mary go get my contract book, or I could run up and get it, so that I can get you that number.
It'll be nice to know the number, because if it's a low 60, that's a jump.
Yeah, no, it is.
It's low 60, that's almost $20,000. So I'd like to justify that to my constituents.
It's the same color as the LTU. It's in the second drawer down on the left side. Oh, yeah, it's that teal, that light green color.
Superintendent Regerio, then can I just ask, because I know when I spoke to you today, and we had a discussion on it, we, the understanding is that this person is already doing these duties, so shouldn't have been at that lower pay.
Correct.
Because of the duties that were being done. Now, what was the job description that she had? My understanding, it's parent coordinator?
Parent coordinator.
That's what her job was?
Yeah.
Which?
Which was strictly the.
The duties she was doing is not the.
The parent phone calls, that was strictly about the communications and work with the families.
Yeah.
It really didn't have to do with all the FCCs and the para-recruitment and all of that.
Hiring.
It was, yeah.
Because the human resources person, we had moved those duties over.
Into, correct.
To that, to the sped department, and this person was responsible for, for the last year.
Correct. Interviewing, recruiting.
They've been doing the duties, but have not received the pay for, basically is what it is. And is the intention to eliminate parent coordinator?
Yeah.
Job out of the budget.
Yes.
It's in place of.
It is replacing it, yes.
It will not be filled.
It will not be filled.
This job is in place of it.
Correct.
Well, should we, would you like to wait? We'll wait until we can hear that.
Salary.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. We need to.
Well, I'm okay to vote. If we could, yeah, we could wait to the next.
Move to the full committee.
Yeah.
To the full committee.
Okay, okay.
We'll do that.
All right, great. All right, then. Here's your motion.
So I'd like to move the position as amended to the full committee.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
I apologize, Mr. Castellanos, I should have.
No, that's okay. It's. Ready for open mic? The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern in the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy change of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 of eight years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District and having discussed their views with the student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of the school administration in attendance, that member, through the chair, may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of a regular school committee meeting. Has anyone signed up? Anyone wish to speak at open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. Open mic is closed. And we will begin the 12th regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Absent.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present. And I will just note that Member Peña underwent surgery today, and we all sent him our best for his speedy recovery. Girl, please rise for a salute to the flag, and please remain standing for a moment of silence following.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Seifka Umeck, breakfast and lunch aid passed in June 2023. Thank you. No minutes to approve, so we go right to appointments.
I am going to refer this to Dr. Alvarez. She's going to share the new appointments that have been made.
Good evening, all. So we are so thrilled to share our appointments and elections for the school year 2324, which start July 1st. We get no rest because tomorrow's the 30th. We'll start with our Executive Director of Data Assessment and Accountability, Dr. Jennifer Shorter. And I do want to share a little bit about each of our appointments and our new executive directors, because I think it's just so important for everyone here and everyone listening to the broadcast to know who our new leaders are. Dr. Jennifer Shorter is a native of Memphis, Tennessee. As a first generation college graduate, is passionate about providing high quality education to historically marginalized students and communities. After beginning her career as a high school Spanish and social studies teacher in Memphis, Tennessee, Jennifer continued to improve conditions and outcomes for students and educators. She worked through, with a myriad of community-based organizations, K-12 districts, and the Tennessee and Alabama Departments of Education, and post-secondary institutions on issues such as teacher and leader effectiveness, program evaluation, leveraging data to inform systems and policy change, and overall strategies to improve education. Most recently, she served as a Director of Quality and Improvement for the National Student Support Accelerator at Brown University, where she worked with school districts, state agencies, and other education partners across the nation to equalize access to high impact tutoring. Her work at Brown has focused on designing research-based backed tools to support the implementation of tutoring and providing strategic advising. Prior to this role, she also served in the K-12 Pennsylvania statewide system for LEA and school improvement, supporting 20 school districts with federally designated schools. Dr. Shorter earned a postgraduate certificate in financial management from Cornell recently, and holds a doctorate in educational leadership policy studies, as well as a master's in instructional and curriculum leadership in secondary education, both from the University of Memphis, and a BA in political science with a concentration in international studies from Jackson State University. So we welcome Dr. Shorter. And I'm not sure if she's in our audience, because I can't see.
She's not.
So she might join us in a little while, and I hope to reintroduce her then. Our next appointment is Dr. Shannon Gardner. Dr. Shannon Gardner is a 25-year employee of Lynn Public Schools, bringing 14 years of teaching experience and 11 years of administrative experience to this role. She has worked on school reform under Race to the Top, school redesign, and school turnaround. She leads Lynn's celebrated early college program, as well as the Advanced Placement Program. In addition, she previously oversaw the humanities content areas, and has introduced inquiry-based literacy practices in social studies, which are now core to social studies instruction, and launched our award-winning civics action research projects in the 8th and 10th grades. Shannon holds a doctorate from Northeastern with a dissertation on problem-based learning. Shannon, could you stand so we can celebrate you? Congratulations on your new role. We have Marisol Gores, who is not able to join us this evening, but she is our new secondary deputy superintendent, and we are so excited to welcome her. She's leaving her current role as the Assistant Superintendent for Lawrence Public Schools, where she leads the charge to diversify the education workforce. As a solutions-focused and equity-driven leader, she led the portrait of a graduate community-driven process to establish competencies and skills for Lawrence High School graduates in service of career pathways, early college, and after dark programs that support students in interest-aligned post-secondary options. Integrity, social justice, and joy are the core values she holds dear to inform every personal and professional decision. These core values drive her passion and commitment for education as an effective driver towards individual liberation. As a founding member of the Merrimack Valley Alliance for Racial Equity, she works collaboratively on a cross-sector alliance team established through her Leeds Fellowship to activate the BIPOC candidates for elected office to impact racial equity. Marisol is a first-generation Dominican-American, mother of two adult children. She holds a Master's of Education from the Harvard Graduate School of Education, a Master of School Administration from the University of Massachusetts Boston, and a Bachelor of Arts from Simmons University. So we hope she is unable to attend today, but she will be, she will be starting July 17th. So again, we welcome her, and we are very, very excited to work with her. And so I hope she's listening, because I think she was going to listen to the broadcast, even though she couldn't be here this evening. And then let's go to, we have very important an interim principal at English High School. Until, we have a current search for a principal. And so Jennifer Men.
Men Canelo.
Canelo. We, we are so excited to have her lead throughout the summer until we finalize the, the search of selection. The committee will be meeting next Thursday for an interview process. And so to that point, we will continue to inform the community once a decision is made. And that brings us to all three of our appointments. Member Castellanos?
Yeah, so for the, for that interim position, will she be eligible to apply?
She.
She is not applying. She, she says she's a fabulous number two, and she's very happy being fabulous number two. And I would agree, she's a fabulous number two.
She's a very good number two.
She also, we met with her yesterday. She's extremely excited to support whoever the final selection is by the committee through the process and through opening of school.
Yeah, she'll be on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. Congratulations to all those appointed. We are very excited to work with you, continue working with you in all of your, your new roles. Congratulations. Next item is a presentation on the Pickering Middle School Grade Eight Students Civic Project on lockdowns.
Yes, so we have a representation of a fabulous history class. Officer Mackin and I visited this class during the civics project presentations, and this class really had some tough questions for us. We have students representing from Pickering Middle School, Emma Kaplan, Gwen Prots, did I say that right? No, say it for me.
Prots.
Prots, sorry. And Julia Barker. And then the teacher is Kelly Santial?
Stanchel.
Stanchel. Oh, my goodness. I, you know, my name gets ruined all the time. I'm so sorry. Please come to the table so that you can share your presentation.
Do you have a PowerPoint? Is it possible to?
Absolutely. Molly, can you help them? Oh, she has her laptop. You can sit if you want.
Do you have?
Yeah.
Do we need Don to, or? Do we need Don to help?
No, no, no.
Okay.
She'll be a good connect.
Don's running down the street.
I know. Yeah, there he is.
I heard his thing.
That's my favorite part.
I think he heard Don and he ran. I love him.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it.
He makes it happen.
Mary, one of, one of the students was unable to make it.
Thank you, Don.
And I'm Julia. And we just graduated from Pickering Middle School.
Congratulations.
Our presentation is about lockdown.
Oh, yeah, sorry. If you, if, if, it's possible for you to present from the table there into the microphone, because otherwise the video won't pick it up, the audio. So, yeah, perfect. Excellent. Excellent. We appreciate it. Thank you. The listeners appreciate it, most of all, yeah.
Okay, restarting. I'm Gwen.
And I'm Julia, and we just recently graduated from Pickering Middle School.
Congratulations.
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 Our presentation is about how lockdown drills affect America's children, but we're focusing on Lynn Public Schools. Our community issue is gun-related incidents in our schools.
Our focus issue is preparing students and staff in the Lynn Public Schools for lockdowns.
Our root cause is ineffective and outdated lockdown drills.
Our goal is to have. Our goal is to have staff and students better prepared to make split-second decisions.
Our target is our superintendent, our principal, and our school safety liaison.
And our tactics are making petitions, contacting and sending emails to gather information.
Okay, so our current lockdown procedure is turning off the lights, locking the doors, and gathering away from them, and gathering away from the windows.
So, some other tactics we researched were run, hide, fight, which is the FBI's version of a lockdown procedures, and then avoid, deny, and defend, which is Officer Mackin explained that the police use this one.
And while looking for more school-friendly options, we found ALICE. ALICE stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate.
School districts who use the ALICE training program are Gloucester, Beverly, Salem, PBD, Marblehead, and Everett.
Okay, and while researching into programs, we reached out to Keith Rivera, who is from Andover Public Schools, who use the ALICE program. He calls it very empowering, because everyone, students and faculty, get to make their own informed decisions based off where the intruder is in the building. If the intruder was far away from your classroom, you could evacuate, but if they were close, you could barricade the doors and lock down.
So, we also talked to Officer Mackin, who tells us that the lockdown method we have right now is a little outdated. He did say that we do have very good safety procedures compared to other school districts, but he said if a real lockdown were to happen, students should know all the exits and where they could get out, like, in the building. And he said that lockdowns can be mentally disturbing for students, especially students at a young age, like elementary schoolers, so we should keep that in mind when researching other tactics.
And lastly, we spoke to our superintendent. You were very interested in what we had to say, and you were also really pushing for this.
So, we did some surveys to ask our fellow students, like, what they thought. So, one question that we asked is rate the lockdown procedures your school has on a scale of 1 to 10, based on what you think is effective, and the average rating was about 5.
Our next survey was on a scale from 1 to 10, rate how safe you feel at your schools. Again, the average was about 5 to 6.
So, we asked another question, and we gave a little bit of background information for this one. So, we said 40 states require schools to do two lockdown drills per year. We asked, do you think that is enough, or should there be more lockdown drills? 36 students said there was enough, 122 said we needed more, and only nine students said we needed less, so the majority was saying that we need more lockdown drills.
Our next question we had was, we run lockdown drills in our schools, but should they be specifically for active shooters? The majority, which was yes, was 99, no, was 23, and maybe was 44. Again, majority rules. These are examples of shootings that have involved students. So, first, on January 28th, 2023, Jorrell students were involved in a lounge shooting, one dead and four injured.
At Michigan State University, on February 13th of 2023, there was a shooting. At the Nashville shooting, on March 27th, 2023, six people were killed, and of those six, three were children.
On April 20th, five people were charged in an Alabama birthday party shooting that happened on a dance studio on a Saturday day. Four people were killed and 32 others were injured.
And in the Frostburg shooting, one person died and three people were hurt on May 8th in 2023. Every single one of these taking place just in 2023. So, we created a petition called, "Do our school safety drills need improvement?" As of right now, we have over 200 signatures, and it is still active if anyone would like to sign it.
Any questions? I just want to note that when I came to visit, you all really expressed your concern around this, and I know Officer Mackin and I have had many conversations when he first started about the need to upgrade and update, and we had really good conversation. It's one of the things I love the most about the civics projects, is that students' voices are being heard, you pose an issue, you ask for input, you share your concerns and are looking for us to, you know, make some change, and I'm so pleased that you were willing to come after school is already out, after you've graduated already. It's so impressive, and it really speaks to our students and our teachers for the work that you're doing, so thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you, wonderful.
Member Kayla.
I'd like to thank you very much for this presentation and for all the data that you collected, and that my hope is that our school committee and our superintendents come up with a plan with Officer Mackin, so that all our students feel safer, and this could be a good guideline for us. And thank you so much for your wonderful presentation, coming out when you don't have to be anything for the schools. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you so much, thank you so much for the presentation, that was terrific, thank you to all your classmates and your teachers, we really appreciate you raising this critically important issue, thank you so much, it was terrific. Next item is a presentation on interdisciplinary units update.
Yes, and I'd like to do a little intro before, as they're preparing for the presentation. You're about to receive a presentation with information about the interdisciplinary maps. I want to first frame the thinking around why this step was taken. This was a district decision to respond to an ELE compliance review. It was a response to address an urgent need to increase the appropriate minutes of English Language Development Service needed to help our multilingual learners advance in their language acquisition. This was a philosophical shift in thinking around the implementation of the ELD block and the integration of content areas in order to make space to provide this instruction. Innovation does not always succeed, but all professions work to be innovative in their thinking and practices in order to advance in science, education, business, technology, medicine, and policy. This is no different than any other innovative idea or practice that is developed to solve a problem. You are about to hear about gaps that are present in the units that are of concern, which will result in an adjustment needing to be taken. Many educators and administrators across our schools and district worked on these units. I want to acknowledge to them that this is not a failure, but rather, a learning opportunity on how to support our students in a more effective and impactful way. At this point, we need to collaborate with the state around integration of content and language standards. Even the state has not developed a model around the work of language development and content learning delivery. We will need to regroup and reevaluate our next steps as we continue our innovative thinking in order to meet all of our students' needs. Please know that the work that was achieved by many educators will be used as an opportunity to adjust, to further develop project-based learning in the future.
Thank you, Superintendent Shannon. I want to introduce our four district reading coaches who will be presenting this evening. Sarah Doughty, Kathy Leach, Susanna Warden, and Samantha LaRoe. They all work under the direction of Michelle Winslow, Assistant Director of ELA and Reading. Mrs. Winslow is on the line. This team, including Mrs. Winslow, initially became involved in the interdisciplinary units when they were tasked with providing training for the elementary principals. Following this, they were charged with analyzing the units to identify the alignment of the ELA standards being taught. This work led to multiple revisions of the units and an intimate knowledge of them. Out of this work, many concerns arose that were eventually presented to Dr. Alvarez and tonight are being brought forward to the school committee. The goals of this presentation are to inform the committee of the outstanding concerns present in the interdisciplinary units, especially as it relates to a high-quality curriculum resource that is aligned to the standards and provides students with access to complex grade-level texts, acknowledge that the district will need change needs to be made moving forward to ensure that the standards are taught to integrity across all grade levels, and present to the committee a recommended plan for next steps. Our district reading coaches will now present to you.
Thank you so much to the school committee for allowing us to share our experience with the interdisciplinary unit maps. For your reference, we will use the terms IDUs, maps, or units interchangeably throughout this presentation. We will begin with our understanding of the history and timeline of the interdisciplinary units. The IDUs began in kindergarten in the dual-language program in the school year 2020-2021, and were brought to the SEI General Education kindergarten in dual-language first grade for the following school year 21-22. Finally, they were brought into grades 1 and 2 into the SEI General Education first and second grades, as well as expanded to grade 2 dual-language classes this school year.
In August of 2022, the literacy coaches were brought on to help facilitate a PD for administrators around the IDUs. This included a walkthrough and exploration of the map components, as well as how to plan a lesson using the interdisciplinary units. In September, we were tasked with writing the weekly guides for units 3 through 8 for the grade 2 IDUs. We were given the themes and the standards for each unit, along with the performance assessment tasks. In October, we aligned the small group My View readers to the K-2 maps by theme and standards. As we were aligning the readers to the standards in the maps, it became apparent that some of the ELA standards were not appearing in the first-grade maps, so we charted out the standards to determine what standards appeared, where, and to the extent of what that standard was included. After this, we were tasked with addressing the grade 1 units in addition to grade 2.
So, the ELA standards, which in these maps fall under the categories of reading literature, reading informational, and writing, were not always intentionally placed within the units in ways in which the standards build upon each other and create cumulative depth of knowledge. The process of creating the units involved bundling content, so in this case, science, social studies, and social justice standards with these ELA standards. This can be a very powerful practice, and there is a great deal of research suggesting that content knowledge is what builds and contributes to reading comprehension. However, in the process of bundling these standards, some key ELA standards are only touched upon in a single unit, or the prerequisite skills needed to teach a specific standard are not present prior to when the standard is taught. Because of this, progression towards mastery of the standards in grades 1 and 2 is inconsistent. What we did here was we took each RI and RL standard for grades 1 and 2 and broke it down into its component parts. We then went through each of the maps and recorded which unit and week explicitly addressed each part. And so, as you can see, there are pieces of some standards that are missing from the maps. For example, in this grade 1 standard, there are components that are not addressed. We have not been involved in the kindergarten maps, but after some analysis, it is apparent that some standards are missing and others are not evenly distributed or progressed. In kindergarten, there are four reading standards that are not present in the maps for that grade level. Additionally, many standards that are present in the unit guides have not been brought down into the weekly guides, and this makes it difficult for teachers to ensure that they are teaching all of the standards, leaving many unaddressed or only briefly touched upon within the curriculum. There are also some standards assessed on the report card that are missing from the maps. In kindergarten, students are graded on naming the author and illustrator of a book, as well as identifying common types of texts. This is based on two of the reading literature standards that are not present in the kindergarten maps. In first grade, students are graded on the same skill, however, it is not a first-grade standard, and therefore, is not included in the units.
Each unit has an interdisciplinary performance assessment task that was planned to be a project-based measurement, where the content, social justice, and ELA standards are bundled together. In order for us to analyze which ELA standards the assessment tasks covered, we created a document that shows the tasks for each unit and which standards are assessed through them. As you can see, many of the RI, RL, and W standards are not assessed in this summative way, or are not assessed through reading comprehension tasks. Some striking takeaways, to the best of our understanding, are, in kindergarten, none of the reading literature and reading informational standards are assessed, and only three writing standards. In first grade, only three out of the 10 standards are covered in each of the three ELA categories. In second grade, four out of 10 writing standards are assessed, two out of 10 reading informational, and two out of 10 reading literature standards are assessed within the performance assessment tasks. Therefore, when we initially began assisting with the drafting, the weekly narratives, we created formative assessment checklists. These exist now in parts of grades 1 and 2. They list the standards, provide a student learning objective, and hyperlink student output options, such as journal prompts, graphic organizers, and task cards to measure learning. Even though it is important that we added the formative assessment checklist, work would need to be done to facilitate a formative reteach cycle within the maps. More guidance and support would be necessary to facilitate the system of formatively measuring a student's ability, and then reteaching or providing more intentional scaffolds for a student to show mastery of the content.
The mentor texts that were selected for the maps were chosen based on the theme of the unit and not the grade level or lexical complexity of the text. The mentor texts also do not always align with the RI and RL standards. Some texts correlate with the theme or content standards, but not with the reading comprehension standards, making it some, sorry, so some texts, yeah, correlate with the, yeah. Like, ugh! Like, I need bigger print. Yeah. So, some texts correlate with the theme or content standards, but not with the reading comprehension standards, making it difficult for teachers to adequately address those reading skills. In addition, there is a great deal of repetition of texts from K-2. The texts you see in red here, they appear in the units three or more times across all grade levels, there are 93 instances of this. The yellow denotes texts that are present two or more times in the maps. This is problematic, because some books appear in all grade levels, K-2, or even pre-K-2. This is also a concern, because when you're addressing certain standards, such as previewing and predicting a text, it's difficult to make predictions when students have already heard or read a text. There is also little opportunity for books in students' hands. Mentor texts are provided for each unit to serve as a read allowed by the teacher. Although we included some close-read passages in order to alleviate this concern and give students access to texts, this is difficult, because it requires teachers to print and The My View small group texts were ordered to supplement the units. These small group texts, however, do not always align to the theme or to both the content and ELA standards. As you can see here, in Unit 5 of kindergarten, the texts for this unit address reading standards and touch upon the theme, but they do not align to the content standards. In other units, there are texts that address content standards, but do not always align to the specific theme or the reading standards. Next, we want to present on writing within the maps. First, the language standards are not present in any of the maps. Example of these standards would include, in kindergarten, demonstrate command of conventions of standard English capitalization, punctuation, and spelling when writing; in first grade, demonstrate command of conventions of standard English grammar and usage when writing or speaking; and in second grade, produce and expand complete simple and compound declarative, interrogative, imperative, and exclamatory sentences, and choose among sentence types depending on meaning to be conveyed. In addition, the writing process is not included in the maps. This would include explicit teaching of pre-writing, drafting, editing, revising, and publishing. Finally, as you can see from the graph, several writing standards- Finally, as you can see from the graph, several writing standards are missing from the maps, while others are not evenly distributed or progressed across the units. For example, standard W1 appears only once in grade K, but W2 appears six times. We wanted to underscore the importance of teaching both language standards and the writing process by sharing some data with you. In school year 21-22, seven of the 32 released ELA MCAS items in each grade three through five were based on language standards. Additionally, when looking at third-grade MCAS data for that same school year, the importance of explicit teaching of writing skills and the writing process is evident. There were two questions from the released items for which students had to write an open-response paragraph and an essay. These were the lowest scoring of all of the released items. From this data, it is clear that our students need standards-based instruction around writing and its conventions.
The maps do not seem to easily facilitate a multi-tiered system of supports. There has been little support or guidance around options for tiered application and instruction built into the units. The maps provide guidance and resources for tier-one instruction. We have created graphic organizers, task cards, and independent application tasks for this tier-one teaching. There is, however, little guidance, text, or materials that can be used to facilitate tier-two and tier-three intervention. As mentioned earlier, there are missing protocols for reteaching content based on midpoint formative assessments. Although the formative assessment checklists are in the maps for grades one and two, there is no guidance for teachers regarding what steps to take if a student is not mastering or making progress towards mastery of a standard. Additionally, the pacing of the units is very tight. Combined with the daily time constraints in the schedule, there is little time to reteach concepts and skills, even if warranted by the data. Lastly, the standards are not consistently progressed out effectively, nor are they hit in enough units for all students to have the opportunity to progress towards mastery.
There has been little onboarding or ongoing professional development regarding the implementation of the maps. It has become apparent that PD would have been helpful around digital literacy and the ability to access the IDUs and all of their components online. Additionally, this is a new form of curriculum for the district, and teachers have frequently expressed the desire for additional support and professional development around this type of standards-based lesson design. This is also the first year that social justice standards have been a part of the curriculum. There was no professional development around these standards and how to appropriately facilitate discussion around sensitive topics, such as food scarcity, immigration, and homelessness.
Lastly, there's concern around the checks and balances of this project. The process and product are missing in evaluation from an impartial and diverse pool of stakeholders, such as curate, ed reports, or rubric around district-written interdisciplinary units of There is a lack of dedicated protocol for oversight of this initiative. Many individuals were involved in this process, therefore, at times, it was convoluted who the point person would be around a specific issue. There was, at times, limited consistent communication to educators around issues such as material delivery, changes, updates, and status of the IDUs. There is evidence of limited calibration across schools and classes. And finally, as was mentioned, there is an absence of a social-emotional learning review and lens, particularly when covering sensitive topics.
Recommend his next steps. Adoption and purchase of the full core for My View literacy in grade K through 2. Development of a comprehensive professional development plan to support the implementation of the platform by ensuring that all stakeholders from school, from school and district administration to classroom teachers and specialists are given the training needed to successfully implement the resources for My View across all tiers of instruction. Provide multiple full-day trainings focused on program activation, whole-group reading, small-group reading, writing, and assessment. Provide professional development for special education teachers and reading interventionists that is differentiated and customized to ensure that the content of the training supports educators in meeting the needs of the students. Training for leaders to provide them with the knowledge and insight to support the planning of instruction and an understanding of the critical look force during classroom visits. In grades K to 2, return to using STE materials utilized prior to the interdisciplinary units. Also, beginning in September, the work will begin to develop a multi-year plan to establish an elementary curriculum council that would support the development of a unifying vision of high-quality elementary science education. And, at the same time, begin the process of evaluating high-quality phenomenon-based STE curriculum units. In grades K to 2, utilize My World resources from SABIS for social studies. And also, beginning in September, the work will begin to establish a multi-year plan focused on adopting a unifying vision for high-quality social studies education and begin the process of adopting high-quality resources that are standards-aligned. The goal in all of this is to adopt a vetted, high-quality curricular resource in order to ensure that all students can engage in equitable access to grade-level instruction and complex resources within a multi-tiered system of support, where all standards are taught to mastery at each grade level, so that students are consistently prepared for the demands and expectations of the next grade.
Member Doogie, member Magnolia.
All right, well, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for your reflection on all of this. You know, it does, I think I've said this in meetings before, you know, looking at what you've done and reflecting on it and taking steps to correct it is very important, especially for our students. I'd also like to publicly thank our teachers, because it sounds like there was a lot of work, and we know, because we've been hearing from them, but there is a lot of work that they've had to do to supplement these things. So, thank you to all our teachers that are watching. And I'm glad this is all coming to light. It's just, it's refreshing to me. One question I had, though, was about the report cards. You mentioned that some of the standards that were on report cards weren't being taught in classes, so were they being graded on the report? How was that working?
I think that was why that was a concern, particularly for first grade, when the, what was assessed on the report card is not a first-grade standard. That standard, those standards are like that in kindergarten, and then in first grade, they kind of move into story structure and characters. So, that, that's why it was a concern, I think, because when it's not present in the curriculum, it's difficult to make sure that students are graded and assessed.
Correct, yeah. And then just a recommendation, just a little bit about myself. This is, these are the books I read in my free time, but it's called Ten Success Factors for Literacy Intervention, and it was written by Susan Hall. It's a great read. I would, I would recommend it. A lot of MTSS recommendations. I can get you that information, Superintendent Rogiro, if you'd like, if you want to read it in your free time, like I did, because I am a teacher, and that's what we do, right? We read nerdy books in our free time. But it is a really good read, and it might be very insightful for the work that you have to do, so, just a recommendation. Thank you.
Member Magnolia.
Thank you very much. So, I, I, I need a little bit of clarification here, because I'm an English professor, and there's a lot of passive voice, and I didn't understand who did what, when. So I'm going to ask a lot of direct questions, and it's okay if you don't have the answers. Okay. So you said there was some confusion around who was heading out the multidisciplinary, I mean, interdisciplinary units. So can you tell me where the genesis from this came from? Was it from teachers? Was it from a curriculum department? Was it from a committee that got together? Can you help me understand the origin?
I think that Superintendent Rogiro reflected on the genesis of it, and it grew out of the idea of interdisciplinary units grew out of deficits and with teaching English learners, and the oversight of it came from the MLE department.
I'm trying to parse together what teachers have been talking to me about and sort of what this, this, you know, accounting is. So what I was getting from a lot of teachers who contacted me was like, those of us who have our boots on the ground who are trying to deliver this, say it is untenable to deliver. And so I'm trying to understand if the folks who are actually delivering this said, "We need interdisciplinary units," or not, or sort of how, how that came about. You know, was it, was it looking at data that said, "Well, what if we use this?"
We wanted dual-language.
Okay.
You know, where they did develop interdisciplinary units, and then with what we were being cited for, you know, in terms of the progress of our English language learners, a decision was made to bring it into our SEI class in K-2.
Okay, and so it, it, as it gets rolled out, almost like a curricular rollout, right? Who, who was checking that it was standards-aligned? Like, was there no checking that it was standards-aligned, and then it's only after the fact that we realized that it wasn't standards-aligned? Like, I'm trying to think about at what stage something got missed, so that we make sure this doesn't happen again.
The units were given to assistant directors in each content to review the standards that were in the units. Teachers designed the units. There was a whole group of teachers facilitated by Amanda Campbell. But when the units were created, they were then shared with assistant directors to review the standards within them.
Member Magnolia, I think some of what the struggle is here is, is taking on the writing of our curriculum, you know?
Yes.
The writers of the curriculum are not people who, who have the skills and the knowledge to do some of this work.
Got it, okay.
So you get that uneven distribution, you get, they don't know how to plan out to, so that the standards, standards are placed in a way that they're progressing to mastery.
Yeah, so introduce, reinforce, yeah, exactly. They weren't scaffolded.
I mean, I think it's more about the, what we took on, and really, our ability to, to produce a high-quality instructional material.
So this is then my final question, which is, in the recommendations, how is My View and the My World going to dovetail with these, rather than just be another thing to use? Because that's the other thing that I heard from educators, which was, they just keep giving us another thing to do, and another thing to do, and another thing to do. And while these do address those standards, how is it not going to feel like another thing to do? Because you mentioned the time crunch of trying to get all of these down, and there's not even time to reteach, so how are, how are they going to be able to use these materials in order to get to these standards? Or, you know, do we have to get rid of something in order to use them? Help me understand that.
We'll be the adopted.
Okay.
You know, when we went into, when we went into that adoption initially, through the green grant, the plan was to, initially was to adopt My View from, from K to five.
But does it, is it used in conjunction with these interdisciplinary units, or in lieu of?
In lieu of.
Okay.
So are you saying we are eliminating this?
It's okay, I just had, member Gailey, member Capola, yep. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I have spent the past two years banging my head against the wall, trying to figure out when I voted for this. When did I say this could come in? There is no such vote. So, as these were being written, like I've been receiving, as member Magnolia said, several complaints about missing gaps. And I myself, as a secondary person, it's very difficult to understand completely how reading goes from K all the way up to five, and then into my classroom in middle school or high school. I can't express how happy I am that you, you did this research, and I feel like you did it for all the students in Lynn, because I've been hearing several concerns. And I know last year, we voted for My View K through five, but we wanted to use some of the interdisciplinary units. So I'm hoping next year that our teachers will get trained, that they will get trained in a timely fashion, and that when they hit the ground in September, they will have the My View books. Children in the second and the first grade will have books in their hands to do read-aloud. And that's my hope. But I have to thank you so much for bringing this forward. And could you be very specific here on what it is you want us to do? You want us to vote to approve My View again? Like, we already approved My View K through five.
I don't think we need to, but if you would like to, you certainly can.
I don't know.
It's just a presentation.
Okay, so we already voted on the My View last year. Okay.
Member Capola, and then, yeah.
So, I think probably, maybe I just got the answer, but I'm not sure. So, if we're not using it, then does it require a vote that we say we don't use it, or do you just stop using it? I mean, that's, I guess, what my question is. Because we've already voted K through five. We determined that when we researched back on the minutes of, minutes of meetings, but we never voted for this, so, but it was being used, so, how do you, do you just drop it?
We just normalize it with, with the vote.
I, I was under the impression, and I think what we just said was that there was not being a vote requested on this. It says presentation.
I, I don't believe it needs a vote.
Okay. We don't need a vote.
We don't, you're just going to stop using it. Is that the understanding, or no?
Yep.
Okay. All right, great. I think we've heard from the teachers all year, we appreciate you coming in, presenting, because it's a hard thing to say if something wasn't totally successful, but, you know, it's better to stop it and then just move forward in another direction, so, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Magnolia had something.
I have one more question, one more question before you leave. Because of the integration of some of these units, and, and one of the interesting graphs here was, you know, which one of these, you know, touched on a number of standards, or something like that, do teachers have the flexibility to maintain maybe one or two of these interdisciplinary units if they do work with the materials that, that, the, the My View and the social studies one? So let's say it's not a sensitive topic, like, it's not immigration, it's not, you know, food insecurity, but they, they thought that one of the units they used worked particularly well and did teach exactly what we're talking about, you know, of a whole year, one unit worked really well. Do they have the flexibility to retain that in order to teach what they would like to teach using these materials? So does the baby go out with a bathwater if they thought that something was particularly effective?
I think what we're going to do around, you know, the content topics, is we're going to work vigilantly.
Vigilantly?
Vigilantly next year in social studies and science, so that, you know, those topics do reappear. I think it's a mixed message, just saying, you know, you can pick and choose. I think we need to align ourselves to the My View curriculum.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for the presentation. I think, would also like to thank my, my colleagues for their questions and their, and their feedback on the, on the school committee, and the, all of you for presenting, and Superintendent Rogiro, Dr. Alvarez, for their, for their work on this. I think, just a, just a couple observations. I think, you know, we've gone through the content, but I think, you know, taking a step back, it, I think it is, it's, it's, it's a, just a fact of this district that we're all grappling with, is that the district has changed rapidly over the last several years. Just the time that I've been on the committee in, in, probably more than doubling the percentage of students who are multilingual learners. And in a district of 17,000, that is a lot of students. That does nothing to mitigate the incredible obligation that we have to those students to get this right. But it's important to remember that, that we're, we, 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 we need to change with our students in order to best serve them and their families. And I appreciate the, the commitment we're hearing tonight to, to, to do that. And I also appreciate, as my colleagues have mentioned, the, the honest reflection. I think that that can sometimes be a challenge, particularly in, in government, when what we do is public and what we do so deeply impacts our community that we, that we care about so much, but we have to do it. And I just, I, I appreciate that, and I think, you know... And I just, I, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, it, it's, it's particularly troubling because these are some of our most vulnerable students, and it's some of the most challenging issues to think about, some of those social issues that they're grappling with at such a young age, that, that we need to be there for them about. So, I, I'm glad that we're addressing that with, with urgency, and just wanted to, to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we did this presentation with a heavy heart. I mean, so much went into, you know, so many of our educators worked diligently on this, but I also want to thank these four district reading coaches for their work initially in trying to align and support interdisciplinary units, but as they become, became immersed in that work, you know, they really struggled with what they were seeing, and really worked hard to put together an analysis, and that they came to you tonight.
Yeah. And thank you for that work, and also thank you to their, their teachers who are always doing this and, and doing the learning, doing the work, getting the feedback, and, and, and living that experience with their students every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is ratification of votes, if any taken in Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. Member Gailey.
We made a motion, a motion was made to allow the mayor to sign the Holy Family, Family lease when it is available.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Absent. Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Personnel Subcommittee.
Okay. It was a jo, a job that came forward, manager of family, community, and paraprofessional support. And a motion was made to move it forward with some adjustments under qualifications in place of paraprofessional and family engagement specialist, was to go in, in a sped classroom, working with students and, was it families?
And/or families.
And/or families.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I know.
There was a question about what the current position pays, effective July 1, 2023, it would be 61,506. And so, this position would be closed, and the, the new position, which, what was it? Eighty?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Absent.